Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October 9th meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Like to call us to order, and before we begin, I'd like to just go over a few housekeeping items. If you have a phone with you, please silence or turn it off. If you're here to speak on an item and are not the applicant, please fill out one of the forms available outside and provide it to Elena or Jared down here. When that item is being heard, you will be called to come up to the podium. Come up, give your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak. If you're here to speak on an item with a large group of people, we encourage you to elect a representative to share your group's concerns, and in those instances, some additional time will be allotted. Where several speakers would like to be heard on the same item, just ask that you please do your best to limit concerns to those that we haven't heard yet. We just want to kind of reserve repetitive, extensive and repetitious comments. Please direct all your comments and questions to us, the commission, and if needed, we'll ask for the applicant or staff to respond. Lastly, we just want to thank everyone for your time here today and the obligations that you stepped away from to attend, and we just ask for your cooperation in upholding the decorum of the meeting and ask that you don't speak from the gallery. So, we appreciate your assistance in that. With that, we'll move to the first item on the agenda, which is receipt of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to receive the minutes of September 25, 2025.
The motion to receive the minutes. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the minutes are received. Next, we have continuance requests, and we'll begin with uncontested requests.
Yes, we have several requests, some of which are, have been deferred under new dates, so I'll address those under the new requests below. But uncontested requests include Item 17, PUD 2102, requested deferred to October 23rd. Also, Item 20, Case SPUD 1755, deferred to November 13th. Item 21, SPUD 1760, deferred to November 13th. And Item 22, Case PC 10967, deferred to December 11th.
Let's ask if there was anyone here to be heard on any of those items. All right, seeing none, we're just ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the uncontested requests, continuous requests as read.
The motion to approve the new continuance requests. Excuse me, uncontested requests. And those are approved. Item B are new requests.
Item 14, Case CPA 2025-7, deferred to October 23rd. Item 15, Case PUD 2090, deferred to October 23rd. Item 16, PUD 2100, deferred to November 13th. Item 18, PUD 2105, deferred to November 13th. And Item 19, Case SPUD 1767, deferred to November 13th.
Anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items? All right, we're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the new continuance requests as read.
The motion to approve the new continuance requests. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. Those new requests are approved. Now, we move on to item of public hearings, and we'll start with the consent docket.
Item 1 on the consent docket is KC 7762, final plat of Springs at Native Plains, and this is located north of Southwest 164th Street and east of South Pennsylvania Avenue. Item 2, KC 7763, final plat of Crossroads Industrial Park, located east of North Bryant Avenue and north of Northeast 50th Street. Item 3, KC 7764, final plat of the Enclave at Blackwood Farms, Section 3, located south of Northwest 63rd Street and west of North Council Road. And Item 4, KC 7765, final plat of Brookwood Shopping Center, located south of Southwest 89th Street and east of Southwestern Avenue.
All right, anyone here to be heard on any of those items? All right, we're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent docket.
A motion from Commissioner Noble to approve the consent docket. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. Consent docket is approved. All right. Now, we move on to items requiring a separate vote. We did have an item that was added to the agenda after it was posted, and this is an item that is, would normally go at the front of the agenda, and we're going to hear, so we're going to hear it out of order, and then we'll resume the order in the agenda. So, we're going to hear Item 23 first.
Item 23 is PUD 1965-SP04, application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1965, located at 8125 North Oklahoma Avenue.
Good afternoon. Mark Zizza with Johnson and Associates. With me is Kate Urban with Mammoth, whose application this ultimately is. This is in the area south of the half-development. There's a lot going on here, so if you have any questions, I'm sure Kate would be happy to answer. In the recommendation, a bit different than normal for a specific plan. In our PUD, we allowed for alternative materials with approval of the planning commission, and there is a unique metal material, and I have a sample that I'll pass over. So, if you have any questions regarding that material, I'm sure Kate would be happy to answer it. Ultimately, it's a wood finish look. You know, if we would have come in with hardy board, that probably would have been, met the PUD without any issue, but instead, they're trying to go with something that's going to be a little bit more durable. If the planning commission recalls, a few weeks ago, there was another building within this PUD that used metal, and that was unanimously approved by the commission. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but we would ask for your support.
Okay. It looks like a pretty exciting project. It's in Ward 7. Commissioner Harrison, do you have any questions, comments?
No comments. Anyone from the commission have any thoughts?
Any other thoughts or discussions?
I would just note that when, if there's no discussion, that when, whatever motion you make needs to include the note about the architectural metal being allowed.
Thank you.
I'm in support.
Okay. Seeing any, no other concerns, I recommend approval for PUD 1965-SP04 with the proposed architectural metal as allowed.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Harrison. I will just note that staff's review, for the record, that staff's review of the specific plan indicates that the proposal is consistent with PUD 1965 master design statement and the master development plan as amended, and that also adding the note that the proposed architectural metal is allowable with planning commission's approval. So, that item has been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And that item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We now return to our regularly scheduled program, and Item 5.
Item 5 is KC 7761, final plat of Woody Creek at Westbury, located east of South Sarah Road and south of Southwest 15th Street, along with variance to the subdivision regulations.
Hi. We still got to give a name and address. Ron Walters, 3924 Mossy Creek, Arcadia. Here today, you ought to look at the Woody Creek project. This is the third development in our redevelopment of the old Westbury Golf Course. This is a community that's been designed specifically for a 50-plus age group. There are 79 homesites, all but three of the homesites back up to either a creek or pond. We're anticipating houses to range in the areas from between 1,800 and 3,000 square feet. We think the bulk of them will be 2,000 to 2,500 feet. We're a gated community. We're building a clubhouse and a pool. Lawn care will be provided by the Property Owners Association. All the area to the north and south is going to be included in the HOA, so we've got extensive common areas along with the other general amenities we have. If you want any more information, the website is active. You can look at it and click on some home plans, this kind of stuff. We're in a different market these days. It used to be you sold your big old house, and you got a little smaller house, you put a little money in the bank. Now, you're going to sell your big old house. You're going to get about two-thirds of the house and pay about a third more. So, we're going to build a really, really nice project. We're on the, well, I told my guys, I said, "Let's work. I want the bottom end of the upper end products." You know, so you're going to have to draw it. It's a new day now with prices of everything. We've been a long way. We've been 10 years out here working on Westbury. This development, we've been working for five years. I think Jeremy posed a question to me about drainage, everything else. It's a complicated development. We've, all of the developments we've done out there have been somewhat extensive. God did all the work for us there. It's gorgeous. I mean, it used to be a golf course. We just had to put the roads and utilities in, but you know, about half of it's in the floodplain or in the floodway or whatever else, so we had a lot of, a lot of work that we've had to do along the way. I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has anything.
Okay. Commissioner Meek, this is your ward. Do you want to lead the discussion?
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Walters earlier. I believe we have an issue if staff wants to speak to what the problem is with the, being able to approve this final plat. Mr. Berry?
Barry. Barry Lott, Public Works. And when this, this item came back up, started wondering why we were hearing a final plat when the roadway construction's done and everything's already underway, which is kind of like, everything was a little bit backwards. So, we start, started researching a little bit, and we have had a flood study that was submitted for this project, and I don't remember the exact date, a year or two ago, but review comments were not addressed, and the flood study's never been approved. And we actually have several of the lots that fall at least partially within the 100-year floodplain, which would also require, in this case, probably a LOMAR F to be filed and approved by FEMA prior to, and these would normally be done prior to the approval of the plans for the construction of the roadway. This was done as a private development, so it came in as a PV plan, which bypasses our review process in technical review. So, there were just some things that, that were basically done out of order, getting these done, and those need to be addressed. So, we need to get that at some point here, what that timeframe looks like, but we're at a point that if the plat goes through without having the flood study approved and the LOMAR F done, we're, we're going to be probably looking at some, some problems with issuance of building permits because of having finished floor elevations established based on the flood study. So, some things that we need to get corrected before all of this moves forward, because I know Mr. Walters is going to want to start selling lots as soon as this thing gets through council, but we're going to have some issues with, with building permits as well. So, those, the only document that we really found that was, one of the required documents was a floodplain activity permit, but that was specifically noted to be for a culvert, and it may have been for some of the grading. So, there's just some, some documents and some cleanup of some fairly substantial items that, that need to be done on this property.
Okay. With, with what Mr. Lott just said, do you have a problem with us? We won't put a date on it unless we have to, but with taking a deferral and then you getting with Public Works?
I think we're having a little bit of trouble with the flood study, because we keep pulling up on all the inspections and everything says done. I mean, every department signed off on it. We can't find any detail on that. So, we're thinking that may be a clerical letter error. We reached back to Debbie the other day and said, "Hey," she's Debbie Martin, she's the one that, this is the 140, 170-page F-PAT that got turned in, and she's the one that signed it. So, we're thinking that just may be an error on that. As for the rest of this, I still got to go to council, and I still got to get addresses which I didn't issued. I still got to, you know, get my hours, signatures. I mean, there's a whole bunch of ways, before I even get a building permit, that I can get delayed.
Right.
Yes, my interest is $1,424 a day. I've got 8 million on the ground out there. I need to move forward as best I can, but if, I'm sure if I can't pacify the city. We had 70, 67 items on the TEs. All of them we've done, except nine, were mostly just clerical issues, adding details. Two of them were big. We solved one of them yesterday, and this is the last one. So, I've got to continue to work through it. Like I said, it's a complicated development. You know, you know we're going to get it done. I was looking, I was looking at the deal there, and it said, "Or assurance of completion of improvements." Well, you know, it's not like I'm going to get out of this one. This LOMAR takes about 18 months to two years. I've got to get a big expensive hydraulic engineer on the payroll and get it solved, you know, so we're going to have to do what we have to do. I'm not dodging anything.
Well, from my standpoint, I mean, this is, this is going to set lot lines and building envelopes.
Finished floor.
And floor elevations on a creek corridor that we've known has had extensive flooding issues, and I would hate to be in a situation where, you know, this is approved, and then you've got, you know, someone that can't get flood insurance because, you know, the lot or the elevation, you know, doesn't meet the criteria in the, in the FEMA guidelines. So, I feel like there's been several items that have kind of been done out of order here, and I just feel this would just add to that.
Right.
And so, I'm, I'm not comfortable, you know, approving this final plat without that information.
We obviously hadn't bumbled and stumbled. We sort of know what we're doing here. Like I said, we've done multiple developments. This one's been, you know, somewhat more difficult. We did move 100,080 square yards of dirt to raise this up, to pull everything out of the floodlines.
Right, and that's why you need the.
That was huge.
That's why you need the LOMAR to be finished, and.
So, they can adjust your finished floor.
As far as us today, we're, we're going to, I'd recommend that you accept a deferral. Otherwise, our only option is to.
And we do need to put a date on it.
Yeah, is to recommend the denial of the final plat. And we can defer to like, November 13th and look at it then and keep, you know, if you haven't worked it out with.
If it is paperwork here.
Why don't you just give us, it's 30 days. I just need 30 days. I need a solution.
Well, our next meeting's 10:23, and I don't think you could get that done in, in two weeks, so I'd ask for 11:13 as our, as the deferral date to give you that 30 days to work this out with staff. If it is a clerical issue, you should have plenty of time to have that done.
That'll be fine. Like I said, I'll have a solution by that period.
Okay. With that said, I'd like to make a motion on Item C 7761 to recommend deferral to November 13th.
I have a motion from Commissioner Meek to defer the item to November 13th meeting.
Thank you.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. All right, that is approved. We'll see you again in 30 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.
Item 6 is Case VP 10, application to vacate a portion of the final plat of Deer Crest Marketplace, located north of West Memorial Road and east of North Rockwell Avenue.
Good afternoon. Stephen Cooksey with Kimley Horn, 4727 Gladiators Parkway, representing the applicant. So, this is a partial plat vacation for Deer Crest Marketplace. It's located at the northeast corner of Rockwell and Memorial. When the plat was originally recorded back in 2016, the Walmart site layout was a different configuration based on the new configuration, which that's in, actually through permitting, I believe, right now. That's going to require the vacation of a number of easements that you can see there. Let's see here. We will do a replat based on the latest site plan that's, like I said, already through permitting right now. We have 60% of the lot owner's signatures as required for the plat vacation, or partial plat vacation. Staff recommends approval, and I would request the same.
Thank you. Commissioner Noble, this is your ward.
Thanks. Did anyone sign up to speak on this?
I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
Okay, this is just a really easy case as far as what you're doing. This is the beginning steps of creating the, the new plat. Any other commissioners have anything? With that, I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of VP 10 to the City Council.
I have a motion from Commissioner Noble to recommend the item to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And that item's recommended for approval. Thank you. Item 7.
Item 7 is Case PC 10989, application to rezone 2330 West Sheridan Avenue from R1 to R2.
Good afternoon. My name's Ricardo with Sanchez Construction. We submitted this application to change the zoning from R1 to R2 and plan to build a duplex.
This is Commissioner Powers' ward, and she's not here. Do other commissioners have any questions or comments?
I didn't have any concerns from, from my review.
Yeah, and I don't.
Next to an R2 zone lot as it is.
Yeah, and I don't have anyone signed up to speak on it.
There are no TEs?
Nope.
Anything from anyone else? No one sign up to speak?
Nope.
With that, I will make a motion to recommend approval of Case PC 10989.
A motion to recommend the item to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And that's recommended for approval. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Item 8.
Item 8 is SPUD 1781, application to rezone 2232 Southwest 89th Street from O2.
Jessica Blowey with Johnson and Associates, representing the applicant, 1 East Sheridan. The application before you today is for a spud rezone with a C1 base zoning, and this is to permit the proposed coffee shop/bakery. So, the existing structure on the property will be renovated for that, and we have not received any protests. Staff is, staff recommends approval. We are in agreement with the two TEs, and I also have four TEs to add, so I'm going to go ahead and pass those out.
Once he does that, Commissioner Newman, this is your ward. Do you have any questions or comments?
Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
I don't have anyone signed up to speak.
We had several conversations on this and worked through these TEs. It's kind of a challenging site, but I'm satisfied with where we ended up in terms of the TEs.
Perfect. Okay, so in addition to the two TEs in the staff report, we would also like to revise some of the uses. We would like to remove the alcoholic beverage retail sales, childcare centers, and eating establishments sit-down. And then, for the eating establishment fast food use unit, we are going to further restrict that to permit a coffee shop/bakery with a maximum of 10 customer seats and a food truck. And then, the food and beverage retail sales use unit, we are going to further limit to permit a coffee shop/bakery with a maximum of 10 customer seats. And then, the outdoor sales and display and outdoor storage use unit, we would like to add, just limited to, the parking of one food truck shall be permitted and shall be allowed to be parked within the right-of-way behind the curb line. TE 4, we are going to revise Section 1.7, the setbacks, to increase the east setback to three feet, the west setback to five feet. And TE 5, revise Section 2.1, architecture, specifically Paragraph 2, to read, exterior building while finished on all new structures, exclusive of windows and doors, shall consist of a minimum 70% brick, veneer, rock, or stone masonry. No more than 30% concrete board, ephistoclo, wood, or architectural metal shall be permitted. Exposed metal or exposed concrete block buildings shall not be permitted, and buildings shall be oriented such that the backs of buildings are not facing towards any street. And then, finally, TE 6, we are going to add language to Section 2.6, the parking, which will read, "Should the site be redeveloped, defined as the demolition and reconstruction of the existing building, the design and number of all parking facilities in this spud shall be in accordance with Chapter 59, Article 10 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code 2020 as amended." Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any comments?
I like it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the only comment that I would make is sometimes it's hard to enforce, like, the number of people that are in there, like 10, and so I kind of usually don't want to recommend trying to put stuff in there that's unenforceable. And then, I guess, coffee shop/bakery, I mean, I'm not sure if that would just be limited. I don't know what that is really. I mean, if you tried to get other food in there, I guess.
Well, it was, it did say café, and I asked them, since they were trying to do bakery, to change it to bakery. I thought that would be more specific than just café. It's a pretty broad spectrum for me.
It will be a come-and-go location. I believe the intent is for coffee and donuts and maybe some prepackaged goods like breads and such, if that helps. But I'm happy to strike the 10 seats if that's what you would like.
I mean, is that your recommendation?
Well, I mean, just because we've seen this before in some PUDs that have come up, and it's been hard to try to enforce, like, what they're actually serving, and, you know, then they decide to change and add, you know, a sandwich or something, and then.
Well, I think I need something on it in terms of what they're doing, because like.
One thought to offer, I mean, is 10 seat, 10 customer, I mean, at a food and beverage eating establishment would be A2 occupancy, so it'd be 15 square feet per person. So, I'm just wondering, do we have an idea of the square footage we're talking about? Because 150 square feet would be 10 occupants.
Yeah.
If it's twice as big or three times as big as that, it's pretty limiting. But yeah, the code would, you know, I mean, as.
The code would limit it to.
Doesn't this also have something to do with the lack of parking?
It does.
Okay.
For me.
So, that's what's driving it, yeah.
Yeah, it's the parking. I mean, basically restrictions on the use and the number of people driven by parking for me.
Got it.
It's going to kind of self-regulate. I think I'm okay with getting rid of.
That's what I was going to say. It's kind of self-regulating. You can.
If it's going to be an enforcement issue, I think I'm okay with getting rid of the 10, but I still would like to try to keep the restrictions on the use.
Fine.
Okay, I think I'm ready now. I want to make a motion to approve with the two TEs as written and the three or four additional TEs as written, with the exception of striking the 10 customer maximum under eating establishment, fast food and food and beverage retail, to recommend approval to City Council.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Newman to recommend the item to City Council subject It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And that item's recommended for approval. Item 9.
Item 9 is SPUD 1759, application for, to rezone 11400 South Pennsylvania Avenue from AA and R2.
Thank you all. Sorry for the delay on this. I know we have, we've had to postpone this a few times. There was a cell tower that kind of complicated things, but this is a piece of property that is owned agriculture. It was donated to the Baptist Children's Home by Richard Thompson, and they want to build three duplexes for single mothers. They will maintain this property. It's not for sale. It should be totally maintained by the Baptist Children's Home, and if you've seen any of the Baptist Children's Homes property, it's, it's really nice. So, and the property now, the existing property they have. So, and the property now, the existing property they have is very nice. So if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Commissioner Newman, this is Ward 5.
Do we have anyone signed up on this?
I do not.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions on this one? We've went through it pretty thoroughly and I'm satisfied with where it's at, so I'd like to make a motion. Oh, I almost forgot, you're okay with TE1, correct?
Say that again.
You're okay with the technical evaluation?
Yes, yes.
With that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to recommend approval to City Council with the TE as written.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Newman to recommend the item to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Govine. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended for approval.
Thank you very much, committee.
Good luck. All right, item 10.
Item 10 is PUD 2101, application to rezone 1600 North 101st Street from PUD 588.
Good afternoon, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street. This is a PUD that would allow some industrial zoning. Currently, PUD 588 only allows the single tower that's on-site. It's one of those large towers that are in northeast Oklahoma City. Again, this PUD would allow some industrial development. There is one TE that we would seek to modify. We do want the ability to have gravel on-site, but we would agree to follow public works requirements as it relates to hard surface paving of the approach. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Harrison, this is Ward 7. I do not have anyone signed up to speak, but I know as we discussed this in our pre-meeting, I think there's a few of us that have concerns on the paving. So, do you have any, you want to start us out?
Yeah, sure. I had the same questions regarding the paving and then the gravel, and thought maybe Mr. Box would want to speak more to that. And then commissioners, you all chime in as well.
Well, I'm sorry, what's the question?
I said, I had the same questions regarding the paving and the gravel, and I thought you might want to speak to that and then listen to what the commissioners have as well.
Interior of the site, they have the ability to have some pretty large pieces of equipment that would be moving product, and so because of that, they don't want to pave the interior of the site, because they would be in a constant state of being damaged and having to repair it. It's not uncommon for industrial development to have gravel on the interior. It's, there are public work standards for approaches with aprons and those things to ensure that the gravel is maintained on-site. So we would ask to be able to have the approach concrete, but because of the nature of the use and the nature of the equipment that perhaps will be on-site, to allow gravel interior to the tract.
I do have someone signed up to speak, so if we want to hear from them. Stephen Stefanic?
Thank you. Apologize, I may have filled out your form wrong. Stephen Stefanic, I'm the Superintendent of Harding Charter Preparatory. Been there for 15 years, so good to see you all. Wanted to really point out to you all, this, this putt in particular is connected to that school right next to it. And if you don't know, that school location has one entrance and one exit, and that's why this property is kind of difficult, because any development on this area will impact 101st Street that you'll see there. Granted, I know that development on roads typically doesn't happen until there is development, but just to keep in mind that 101st Street is the only access road to a 600-student high school that has zero school buses. That means there's 600 cars to go to that property that has no traffic lanes or anything. So it can be a concern at a later time if there's multiple development, that that road's going to be, needing to be developed. As you can imagine, 300 seniors that drive on roads aren't really the best drivers, especially if they don't have lines to follow. So just keep that in mind as you make your decision. But I do support development, as long as we do it strategically. So thank you.
And I think there is even a question on the fact that this is a public street, and is it...
Yeah, so we have an access easement. We did, upon filing, we got notification that the Oklahoma City Public Schools had concerns, questions. We modified the PUD, and we have a letter from Laura Holmes' attorney at Center for Education Law, who is the attorney for Oklahoma City Public Schools. And her email says, McKenna and Caitlin, thank you for incorporating the changes requested. We will not have any objection to the proposed PUD. Respectfully, Laura Holmes.
And you're proposing to pave the street, finish paving the street into the property?
Yeah, it's just the internal to the site.
Is it a single user?
No, I mean, there's a, there exists a potential that you'd have multiple users.
Just trying to imagine what this is going to look like as far as traffic flow within the area. Is it just one giant gravel lot?
So, what it looks like to me, just to make sure that I'm on the same page, so 101st is a paved street, but it, basically, the paving ends at their far east parking lot? Is that correct?
Remotes, a small turnaround.
So then, the applicant would be responsible for paving from there to their property access?
Yeah, and we do require a specific plan, and so you're going to be able to see this at the time, and so how movements and things could be impacted, perhaps the decision on gravel could be punted to the specific plan, so that we can show you exactly when we have those end users.
Do that. I like it.
But we do specifically require that within the putt.
All right. Commissioner Harrison, how do you feel about that? You'll get, we'll get an opportunity to see it again at specific plan.
I feel more comfortable with that than before. And punt the paving in for me, sure.
Any other thoughts from commissioners?
That's my question.
Do we have to put a TE to be able to modify the paving requirements at the specific plan state? If we, if we're going to do that, I'd like at least that TE to be added.
A modification in the specific plan? So what, the TE that I propose would allow for the ability to have gravel on-site. It would require the approach to be paved pursuant to public work standards.
The completion of the public street to the property line and then approaching into the property.
Right, it's just internal to the property.
That would make sense, that it would be a modification of TE1, to just clarify that language. It makes sense to me.
20-acre industrial sites that have all gravel, though? Anywhere?
Single user.
Yeah, but industrial, industrial or not, at the building permit phase, there's going to have to be hard surface parking, according to the square footage requirements of the use type for the building, including ADA spaces. And he's asking to do all gravel, does that, when they're asking to do all gravel, does that remove the ability for development center to require parking hard surface?
Hard surface, it shouldn't.
Not, not that I'm aware of. They're still going to have to provide an accessible space in order to pull a CO.
Okay, just making sure.
Still not, not that excited about it, you know, without having control and having someone actually responsible for the maintenance of the gravel, you know, in the HOA or whatever they're going to do.
And we're allowing...
There is a common area, I'm sorry, there is the standard language in the putt that all common areas shall be pursuant to, here would be a POA, right, it's not an HOA, but a POA.
And would still have to meet code upon permit submission, so I think, I mean, to me, that feels better, that we're allowing for the potential use of gravel, subject to meeting all the other requirements when the specific plan comes through.
We want to leave it flexible, punted to the specific plan, except commit that the approach would require hard surface paving pursuant to public work standards.
So in order for, in order for us to move forward, could you clarify the modification to the TE?
Sure. So, well, I think maybe we just strike TE1. TE2 would be, approaches shall be required to be hard surface pursuant to public work standards. Planning commission, at the time of any specific plan, shall review and approve the use of gravel for all other areas.
And I think you need to put something in there about the completion of the public street to the property line, because that's more than approach.
Well, that would be required no matter, so it's not within the legal description of the putt, so I don't know that we can do that, it's just going to be required no matter what. It's not, if it's not within the legal description of the putt, I don't know that we can make it...
Part of the TE?
Right.
Or a TE.
An off-site improvement like that, I don't...
Can we hear if there's any concerns in public work?
Very large, public works. The conversation was, basically what Commissioner Noble was talking about, was the completion of that public street to the property line, so that would be finished, not just specified as the approach. When I, when I think about a driveway approach, it's a five or 10-foot section that would come basically from the edge of the public street to the property line. That's, that's going to be what I would term as the approach. So this needs to extend further and go to where that, where the public street ends.
That's fine, yeah, from, I mean, the approach including connection to the public street.
Yeah, so we have something like that in there, and that would be to the public standards and go through all of that.
I don't recall what I said the first time, but we can tack on to the public street.
Okay, so let's be a bit more specific, so we can make sure we get this where we want it, between the two.
What's, I'm sorry?
Let's make it a bit more specific, so we can go ahead and get the TE where it needs to be in order to include what public works or Commissioner Noble's...
Are you okay with saying the completion of northeast 101st Street to the property, to the existing property line?
Yes, pursuant to public work standards.
Yes, per...
I don't think we could do anything other than that, but yes, where we want gravel is interior to the site. So completion of 101st Street, including the approach, shall be hard surface to public work standards. The decision on gravel internal shall be reviewed and determined at the specific plan stage.
Right, so I don't think you need to even include anything about that, right? The gravel, it's in the, it's in the application, right?
Gravel's allowed, so what I just said should swap out for TE1.
Yep, so hard surfaces on the approaches, and then completion of northeast 101st property line.
Yes.
Recommend it.
I'm going to recommend approval, I'm making a motion to recommend approval of PUD 2101 with the updated TE.
As stated.
As stated, with Sarah's comments.
Sorry, Sarah Welch, Planning Department, did you include in the motion that, that the gravel would be then, under the planning commission's purview?
Yeah.
That was part of the record? Okay, because I'm, I'm just thinking ahead to how, how you would interpret that, or what, what would make it so that it, if there's no parameters, it's in the PUD, I'm just wondering how you would expect staff to...
So it's an allowable surface in the PUD, and that specific plan, then we would recommend approval or denial of the specific plan?
Based on?
The surface.
Based on their discretion with the building and the use proposed.
It'll, it'll be very similar to one we heard on the bucket previously, where staff won't have any real guidance for you when it comes back for approval.
I trust these fine folk to make a...
I mean, are we more comfortable with just including that in the motion?
I would feel more comfortable.
You would feel more comfortable?
Including that.
Okay, so you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I want to amend my motion to include...
Gravel as an approved service.
As an approved service.
Within the specific plan.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so we have a motion, amended motion, from Commissioner Harrison that deletes, to recommend the item for approval, deletes TE1 and amends TE2, or adds TE2. That's been, we're waiting for a second. It's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Item 11.
Item 11 is PUD 2103, application to rezone 15601 North County Line Road from PUD 2037.
Will you put that? Once again, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. Kendall Dillon is the civil engineer for the project, who's also here. I've got a last-minute modification, so currently, tract 1 is zoned in a manner to allow 40 foot lots at 4,400 square feet. At filing, the proposal was to change that to 4,000 square feet. In speaking with Commissioner Claire, what we're going to do is modify so that tract 2 will remain 4,400 square feet, so there's really no change to what is allowed on tract 2, excuse me, tract 1. Tract 2 is to allow for the provision of a duplex development. So that's really now the only change you're going to see, is that tract 2 would allow for duplexes. There are two TEs, neither of which we can agree to. TE1 asks for a minimum of 25% usable open space within the PUD. That is, that is a step, perhaps multiple steps, way too far. We cannot agree to that. And TE2 asks that all lots located within 600 square feet, excuse me, 660 feet of usable open space. What we can agree to is that all lots shall be located within 1,320 feet of usable open space. I think it's worth pointing out that the 1,320 feet is actually much closer than the city's own ordinance requires as it relates to proximity to parks. Under your park ordinance, what it says is, developer-provided private local park must be located within the plat and within the development such that required amenities are within 3/4 of a mile radius from every dwelling. What we're proposing is not 3/4 of a mile, but rather only 1/4 of a mile. So we're actually much closer than what the city's ordinance requires from proximity to open space, parks, and dwelling units. So we would propose to modify TE2 to 1,320 feet and strike TE1.
All right, so you're 1,320 feet, so that's a five-minute walk. Are you measuring that basically on a radius as a crow flies, or is that down the sidewalk around the corner?
Radius.
That's a radius.
Where this number one TE came from with staff, can the staff have...
Yeah, and I, to that, I've asked, and still have no answer as to where it came from or why it's here.
Well, it looks like, you know, from the site plan, lot layout, that there's a tremendous amount of property that's not buildable on the, on the site, and I think incorporating all of that into the property, and I'm not sure that it gets to 25%, but it, it looks relatively close. And so on an individual basis, for this proposed property, I think that we're close to 25%. And I think that's, that's probably what we're, we're discussing.
Maybe. That, the TE says usable open space.
It's front yards.
Well...
I asked that question.
Yeah, I, I think the intent of it is that flood area to the north is, is usable as long as there's not a flood. Which is going to be the majority of the time, so, I mean, that's my interpretation, is that you can put walk, you can put, you know, soft, soft surface trails in there.
Pond.
It's, yeah, it's usable.
And where else would the usable space be? I mean...
Yeah, so I mean, there'll be, you know, so here's the, here's the problem with the open space discussion at a PUD. We don't know exactly all the home sizes, we don't know everything that'll go there. The reason that the open space discussion is located within the subdivision regulations is because it's a plating issue. We're not at the plat. We don't know how much usable open space. The question about front yards and sidewalks and all those, the way that usable open space is defined in the code, I mean, an argument could be made that front yard is in fact. Now, staff is going to take the, the opposite approach, but we don't know. The subregs have minimum requirements for open space. We will know at the plating stage exactly how much open space we'll have, because that's when we know actual number of lots, how much flood plain, floodway actually exist on the site, because we... because we have site-specific designs of all the lots, all the streets. What you see before you is simply conceptual. The plat is when we have the actual details.
If I might, so weigh in here. So, open space usable in the code is defined as area intended for common use, so not front yards, by occupants or residents of a development either privately owned and maintained or dedicated to a public agency, normally including swimming pools, recreation courts, patios, open landscape areas, and green belts with pedestrian walkways and equestrian and bicycle trails. So that covers a lot of ground, but it's meant to be, you know, used by people.
So sidewalks and streets.
It's, I wouldn't include sidewalks, it'd be my interpretation, it says pedestrian walkways, but maybe.
And that's the problem, that's the problem, is that it's so murky as to what that actually means.
That one thing maybe, but I think that the rest of it is pretty clear, that we're talking about open space that's usable to people, and it could be green belt, which is like what Commissioner, what was said earlier, was that, you know, you can include, that was our intent to include on this and other developments where we're having this discussion, these large green belt areas that are often, you know, floodplains and so on. So, but I disagree, this is the time, the zoning, to incorporate this discussion, because if we don't now, when the plat comes back, the applicant will say, well, there's no requirement for open space, there's no percentage, so therefore we didn't put it in the plat.
The subregs do.
Is there not?
The subregs are where the open space requirements are housed. Not Chapter 59.
Yes, the subregs.
It's within the subregs, which is a plating discussion, not a zoning discussion.
But if we want the subregs to be modified, if there's not enough open space. If we, for this specific case, we want them to be modified.
No, you can't, see, and so there's, you can't modify subregs through Chapter 59 zoning.
Let me finish, please. So the subregs can be modified in a, by a PUD? Yes?
I would, well, your city attorney's office has always taken this, you can't do that.
Hold on, let me restate. If you want something to be done differently on a, on a piece of property, the PUD is the time to do it. The subregs say what they say. So if the subregs say that the percentage shall be a certain amount, the Planning Commission, the City Council can modify that at the PUD stage and require more open space if that is a zoning issue.
Ms. Randall, I've always been told, since, well, I guess, actually, when I was in your office, under your tutelage, that you cannot modify subregs.
That's not what I just said.
But.
You're twisting my words. But, but what I'm saying is, the Planning Commission and the City Council have the ability to assign a different open space requirement than the subregs acquire at this stage.
I think you're saying more than not.
Yeah. So, again, I guess I would just fall back on the reason that open space percentages aren't required in Chapter 59 is because that's a plating function. Because you don't know exactly where the lots and the streets and all those things are gonna happen until such time. Now, maybe we have more than 25%, but we don't know that yet. Because there is, you know, there's a good amount of floodway through here, or floodplain through here. But we don't know at this stage. 25% is an enormous number. Enormous. No developer will ever commit to give up a quarter of their property to open space.
Unless it's unbuildable.
If it's unbuildable, sure.
And that's kinda where we're going, and right, what that percentage is. I just think that when you come here and you wanna make changes to the standard R1, 6,000-square-foot individual lot, that you then become open to making adjustments to additional items, and that's what we.
Well, here, now, we're really not, right? Because we're not modifying what we already have. We're simply adding a duplex piece.
Which is.
That's, that's the point.
Just a huge modification.
It is modification. I mean, I guess, what I don't understand is, from a practical standpoint, why are we having to have this argument right now? I started asking staff what exactly is meant by that early in the week, and I'm just now hearing, as I'm staying at the podium at 2:20, what is intended. I don't think that's the way that we should be doing this. It puts all of us in an adversarial position, and it's not an open, honest way to conduct these things.
Well, to address that, I mean, I mean, a PUD is by definition a negotiation, it is a new ordinance. And so when we suggest an open space requirement, we expect the applicant to come back and say, well, we can't do that. How about this number? That's what we were expecting to, and you know, your engineers know how much open space would be available roughly, and I think we could get to a number.
I don't disagree, except I asked the specific question on what exactly is contemplated here. I was told I'd have an answer Wednesday, didn't have it. I'm just now hearing from you what it is that you were actually intended. I know you're busy, all I'm saying is, I don't know that this is the best way to implement new provisions. I've never seen this request for 25% open space. To me, I think, this is the first time I've ever seen it on one of my applications.
Well, and this sort of high-density development with 40-foot lots and duplexes is also new to the city as well.
Again, now we're just doing duplex. I don't think duplex development is new to the city, in fact, I had one on City Council this week.
No, I'm, yeah, I understand, I'm just saying that there's a lot of density being requested, and a lot of higher-density subdivisions that have been requested.
Kendall, do you know the percentage of open space that we're gonna have?
Can we request common area and not open space?
Well, that's what it would be at the plat stage, right? It would be listed as common area, like we see, but I think.
I just feel like that, you call it common area, and that takes out everything else. Whether it's usable, or it's whatever, you know, it's common area, it's usable and it's maintained. Because some of this open space, if it's not usable, you can't maintain it. I deal with the same thing in my neighborhood. It's open space and, you know, considered to be common area, so, you know, we're.
Swamp.
And it's a swamp land, and we're supposed to take care of it, and it's just a pain in the butt.
Yeah, I think it's the same.
Just because of that language is, is so broad, you know? I mean, common area is assumed to be maintained by the HOA, and you know, anybody can be there, and.
And, but I think what, by saying that the 25% requirement is not as out of whack as it's being made to sound, because it's including natural green belt that you can't build on anyway, but that kids can still play on, that live in these duplexes with really small yards.
Right, but it's.
And by knowing, by establishing that principle now, that would allow the applicant to draw a plat that actually meets the requirement, instead of showing up next time saying, oh, here's our plat, it's all done, let's negotiate it.
Yeah, and we can't talk about it.
Right, we can't talk about it.
We'll save you the money, and you know what you gotta draw for the plat.
And I agree with that part of it.
I got one more thing.
I agree, I just don't agree with the vague language that.
I remember Mr. Grubbs being here on application, and we, we were giving, you know, nine kinds of heck on a pocket park being so many feet, and locating it central to the development. But then we're, now we're looking at 1,320 feet from a swamp with this high of a density, with no parks.
There'll be.
I don't have an issue with the quarter mile, I think, I mean, that's probably the upper limit, but.
But you guys remember the word I'm talking about?
At least it's a negotiation.
Okay.
I don't think the 25% is crazy in this case, it's specific to this application, it's not a boiler, we've clarified, it's not a boilerplate that's gonna show up on every one of these. It's not a renegotiating of the subregs, because it's specific to this particular PUD. So it's kinda like, what is the number that you already have? It may not even be an exceptional lift.
One of the problems, though, is, there is no actual definition, there's no actual interpretation of usable open space, right? Mr. Butler.
That's fair.
Walked through what he thinks it is. Well, what's to say when we go to get COs and permits and all these things, that the manner in which he views it is different? Because it is so vague in how usable open space is defined.
Hold on, I just read from the code itself, that was the code.
Well, I understand, but read it again, because it says, "used by everyone." A public street is used by everyone, a sidewalk is used by everyone, and it even says privately owned. So why couldn't it be a front yard? My neighbors wander through my front yard every day walking their dogs. Does that mean it's usable open space? Sure feels like it.
It says usable area intended for common use by occupants or residents of a development, either privately owned and maintained, referring to the open space itself, or dedicated to a public agency, normally included swimming pools, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, there might be a thing or two that's open to interpretation, but I think it's pretty clear that it's, you know, that includes these, these green, it even says green belts, et cetera. You know, maybe the only thing, like you pointed out, was the pedestrian walkways, would that include, you know, sidewalks themselves? That could be clarified, but I think overall, it's pretty clear.
My interpretation, privately owned means homeowners association or whatnot, not somebody's front yard.
And until different, I would think pedestrian walkways does mean sidewalks.
I could stretch to that, too.
Yeah.
If the requirement's so onerous that no developer would ever even think about building with that requirement, it's like, we do need to re-clarify what is included in usable open space.
Right.
That sidewalk is a fair debate, I think, you know?
We've had the same conversation on R4 multifamily, counting parking lots as, as common space.
Well, that's, oh, yeah, and so here, again, there's so many layers to this, that perhaps a bigger conversation needs to be taking place with staff and Planning Commission and the development community. Open space as defined in the code does include parking lots. Now, usable open space doesn't. But under the R4 regs, a parking lot is counted as the open space. I'm not saying it's the right way to do it, but it is.
Right.
Sorry to make it worse, bringing that up, but.
No, you didn't make it worse, it highlights that there is uncertainty here, and I don't know that putting TE's.
I think, once you get to plat, and you designate the spot as what it is, usable open space, like you do on every other plat, and it gets approved, I mean, I don't, I don't see you getting pushed back on permitting.
But, you know, they're called common areas at that time.
Yeah. Should we refer to it as common area?
Well, that's the only thing I was saying, it's like, if we're gonna adjust something that's gonna be on the plat, why don't we call it what it's gonna be on the plat?
Which is CA, common area.
Yeah, which makes more sense to me than open space, which could be defined as maybe having sidewalks, and maybe being in the flood area, I don't know.
Well, when we see flats, they don't, they don't pull that out and designate it, they find pocket parks, there's usually unbuildable areas within the land, I mean, so.
But they do, they do it because it was in a PUD requirement, though.
It's because it's in the subregs.
Right.
When you see the plat, what it'll say is acres of common area, right? And so you are plating certain things as common area, parks. You're not pla, I mean, so are we gonna start plating sidewalks as common area? Because now that's a.
Well, none of those common areas have to pay taxes.
I mean, you might, in certain circumstances.
Now you're pla, I mean.
Density areas.
Somebody's gonna pay taxes.
Becomes complicated on the ownership structure.
There might not be any other property available in a super-dense pocket neighborhood, other than the sidewalks and common areas, so, anyway.
They gotta have sidewalks.
I just, on this property, it's the individual site itself, I think you'd come up with a number and be satisfied.
What's the percentage common area required by the subregs?
Very little.
Three.
Like 3%?
Yeah.
Reset.
What if we did 15%?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think you get to 15% very easy. But I don't wanna stop here, either. I wanna continue on some of the other issues with the, with PUD.
It's a number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, I'm perfectly fine with that number. Because I know, I know you can get there.
Yeah.
Is the fact that we just don't know the percentage of the flood area on this parcel, is, I mean, is that why we can't land on 15 versus 25, or?
Yeah, and I think that.
Because, I mean, because our, it.
The developer could easily get there, I mean, easily get there. I mean, they already know. How much you can't build on.
Yeah, but what we don't know is exactly where those lot lines go, which gives you the exact percentage.
And I agree, but what I'm looking at, just in the hash, I, that looks like the easy 15% of this property.
I agree. Again, I wanna be, I guess, as clear as possible, that it would include, the usable open space would include the area we've all been talking about.
So what if we said a minimum of 15%, knowing that the flood area is.
Sure, perhaps it's more.
Oh, shit.
Because, and you just put the calculation into the plat?
Yeah, minimum 15% as long as the floodplain counts.
Inclusive of, minimum 15%, inclusive of a floodplain?
That's a big chunk right there at the corner.
All right. Would you, on the 1,320, instead of a straight-line radius, would you consider a path of travel?
No. It's still significantly closer than what the ordinance requires in proximity to a park. The ordinance would require, and I understand we're asking for something different, but I think the percentage of what we're asking for compared to the percentage difference is the wrong way, right? So I think the code would have 3,000-plus feet pursuant to this. And what we're asking for is 1,320, rather than the 3,600 and whatever.
I would ask you, then, to reduce the R2 by 2/3.
We are 2/3 closer than what the ordinance requires.
Can we, setting the ordinance aside, because if you were just building per subregs, you wouldn't need to rezone, you know, you'd just go build on land that was zoned for what you want and do what's allowed, you wouldn't be here. So the fact that we've relaxed the percentage from 25 to 15, in my mind, makes it more important that we, that we keep that quarter mile, so that you don't just get it all satisfied with your floodway. You have to put some meaningful common area in the middle of the development.
You haven't relaxed the percentage. The percentage under the subregs is 3%. So even at 15%, we're 5X what open space requirement exists within the subregs. 25% is not a real thing, this was created by staff. The subregs say 3% open space. We're saying 15 here, so we're actually 5X what is required under the subregs for open space.
PUD. Then why are we, why are you here?
Because we wanna add duplex lots.
Right.
Yeah. And to get duplex lots, we're giving you 5X open space.
Yeah, I mean, me personally, I'd rather you just leave what was approved five weeks ago, six, or five months ago, and leave it alone, no R2, and go on.
Yeah, so here, instead you get R2 and then 5X open space, which we think is a better deal. And you get more definition on proximity to the open space than you have now. Right now, there's no requirement.
Well, but you, you proposed a 1,320 feet.
Correct.
In lieu of the 660, which I think that's a fair negotiating point that we could, I would accept personally. But it makes it that it's not possible for you to just get that 15% with, with what you can't build on anyway.
So here, so again, here's another problem. There is no requirement on proximity to a park in the subregs. The ordinance, as it relates to parks, has a statement for a qualifying park that it's 3/4 of a mile radius. So there is actually no requirement on proximity. We're pulling from rules that exist for other spots that the city has, and simply making it more stringent than that. But the subregs have no, every plat you've seen until today and recently, there is no proximity.
In PUD 2037, I don't believe we put a limit to where the property.
Correct.
Right.
Doesn't exist.
So just revert back to PUD 2037, and we're, we're good to go.
Again, we want duplex lots.
We haven't even talked about fence yet.
No, and we're gonna. But again, I just, for me, I mean, this, this rule of the community with this much density, and then to add this much duplex to, it's just too much.
What is too much?
Too much R2.
Very compact.
I mean, it's probably 55% of the overall development is R2.
The Track 2 is the R2, it's the smaller piece.
Yeah, so there's 208 units of R2 versus 297.
Track 2 smaller than Track 1?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Track 2 is the top one.
The, yeah.
Okay.
We have them in our backwards in our.
Track 2 is the smaller tract.
I was looking at a different page, it had them, had them.
Track 2 is the north.
North one, and Track 1, south one.
Yes.
But opposite on the staff report.
Yeah, that's not what our, that's not what ours say.
Oh, so on the screen.
Anyway, still too many.
There's actually one that shows it correct in the staff report, and one that shows it, two that go different, so, you know.
I like 15%, 1320 feet. Make it easy to draw the plat, you'll know exactly what you need to do, and.
Yeah, we're fine with that. 15%? 15%, 1320, which is more rules than exist under the current zoning.
So at least we have something on the table to, should we move, should we keep this moving to fences for the moment? Or do you wanna talk more about...
R2?
I mean...
Do you want a wall?
No, I want the wall, too. I just, again, if, if I'm the only one, I'm the only one, but I just think that's just too much R2 in this rule of an area.
I didn't mean to move on from that, if you were still...
Yeah, no. I think I'm standing alone, so...
No, I agree with you.
I'm, I'm mixed on the density. I think it's, it's, it's a balance of if you're getting more, you're doing more. That's why I'm focused more on these, these other two items, but not to, it's still a valid concern, for sure.
I know, I think that's a good way to state it, right? Because right now, you have all 40-foot lots with no limitation on proximity to open space, and it would only be 3% open space. And so I understand we're asking for something that's not there, but we feel like pursuant to what we just negotiated, we're giving you more than would otherwise exist. So the balance, the trade-off is some duplex development for a greater percentage of open space and greater proximity to open space than would otherwise exist under the current zoning. But I'd like to hear everyone's thoughts, since we're down two members. But I wanna, you wanna talk about fences. You are the fence guy.
I live in, I grew up in the land of Odom, where everything was really nice. And it still looks the same, just like it did when I was in high school, so, yeah. Along County Line Road, let's talk about the wall. Now, before you start, I'll jump in, because I haven't even spoke to any of my other commissioners about this, but I'm ready to make a move in what I like when you talk about, oh, we'll do brick columns, we'll do them on every 25, 50, 30 feet or whatever, and still stick with the stockade. It's been heartburn for me to, to do that because I drive around additions that have rotten stockade in between nice brick columns. I would ask that if, if we allow that, that it be, we change it to composite product.
Composite fence material?
Yes, sir. I know it's a big ask, guys, but these are forever, these are forever. I'm done.
It's a lot cheaper than masonry.
I'll go once I said I was done. We have track two to the north. There'll be lots. Needs a wall on County Line.
Oh, for sure.
Where at, on the north side? Oh, okay. That's, that's fine. I just, you can't have it up here because of the floodplain. Yeah, okay. The, kinda looks like a plat, but not really.
Why don't we just defer this? I mean, I... Well, okay, I mean, I, I don't know that we can get an answer on walls. I mean, this, that's new. I would have loved the opportunity to sit down with staff and really understand where they're coming from instead of hashing it out here for 30 minutes. I think that's a fair request for developers to be able to know what is intended with the technical evaluations that are presented to them. So why don't we defer this one for two weeks?
Good with that. All right, two weeks to, what is that, October 23rd?
Yep.
I will make a motion to defer PUD 2103 to October 3rd.
So we have a motion to defer the items to the October...
You said 23rd.
October 23rd, planning commission meeting. It's been seconded by Commissioner Harrison, please cast your votes. And that item's deferred. All right, item 12.
Item 12 is, excuse me, case PUD 2104, application rezoned 15100 North County Line Road.
David Box, 525 Northwest 11th. Here about the applicant, Mark Grubbs, also here with me. This is a PUD that would divide this into two tracks. One, track one, would be a commercial tract right there at 150th and County Line. And then track two would be a modified single-family development to allow for 4,400 square foot lots, which is what's across the street. I think there's a, I think staff has a misprint on the front page of the staff report where it says development on 4,000 square foot lots. If you look at the body of the document, it does say the minimum lot size shall be 4,400 square feet. So the PUD itself says 4,400. The staff report on the front page is in error. So there are five TEs. We agreed to TE1, we agreed to TE2, we would not agree to TE3, and we, TE4 and 5 are what we just wasted an hour of our life talking about. This one does not have the same issues that the previous one had with the large floodway, floodplain going through it. So we would disagree with TE number five, uh, four. And on TE5, we would agree to the 1,320 feet from a proximity standpoint.
And I'll clarify on the, the 25% or the open space on this one, I think there was a misunderstanding that that was applicable to both cases.
So staff is suggesting striking TE4?
Strike's a strong word, though.
Well, if it was not meant to be here, what else would it be?
Okay.
Anybody here on this?
I don't have anyone sign up to speak for it, for this. So TE3, I just wanna understand TE3. So it's developed in accordance with CE3, a 20-foot landscape buffer shall be provided along the boundary of the track where abutting residential zoning. Can staff clarify what?
Landscape?
What, what the subregs say?
The code, it's 15 feet.
15 feet.
And a 5-foot landscape buffer. So it's a 15-foot setback and within the 15, a 5-foot landscape buffer.
So a total of 20 or 15 with five of it being landscape?
It's, it's, it's total of 20 with five being landscape.
Right.
15 being a setback.
Is that what you thought?
Yeah, the code is 15-foot setback and a, within the 15, a 5-foot landscape buffer.
So it's 10 and 5.
And that's correct. So it's really 15 feet?
The setback?
And the landscape, they're within one.
They're within the same 15 feet.
Yeah, yeah, they're within the same 15, correct.
And a nice fence.
So whereas regs, subregs say 5-foot landscape, this TE says 20-foot landscape. So, I mean, that's a big...
Well, and I think I said this in, in the meeting that we had, the amount of landscaping and the points you have to have are still the same number, so it's spread out over a wider area?
I don't know, that makes it better.
But that's just a question, like, what, what were we trying to get?
With the, with the additional buffer width?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the, and Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, the typical buffer of 5 feet is, in other cases, that's been...
We can make it a, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Yeah, I was just gonna say...
It's against R1 instead of smaller lots, right?
We could do a 10-foot landscape buffer.
Yeah, I was just looking to increase the actual landscape itself, because 5 feet's pretty small.
So we can do 5, the problem is 20-foot starts eating into significant, meaningful, commercial development. We could do the 15-foot buffer, but within the 15, rather than 5, make it a 10-foot of landscaping.
What else could be in the buffer? The parking? Can the parking be built over the buffer?
No, not in the landscape buffer.
But in the buffer?
In the setback, yes.
Okay, that was a question.
So that gets you five extra feet of non-parking.
With a really nice fence, it's gonna be adequate. Yeah, I mean... Anything, anything else on the commercial portion of it?
What was that?
I was just asking if there's any, anything else about, on the commercial portion of the, of the...
Well, the TE1, which we agreed to, is that kinda standard language about the speaker box.
Yeah, there's a lot of uses, I mean, a lot of uses. Just questioning some of them, composting being one of them.
We can take composting out. Mark, care about composting? Do you care about composting? Okay, we can take composting out.
Greenhouse?
We don't need a greenhouse.
Home garden?
We don't need a home garden.
Hoop house?
We don't need a hoop house.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
You guys are anti-agriculture up here.
I'm still waiting for the day for someone to come in for that hoop house permission.
I bought property and someone struck hoop house and I need to rezone, yeah.
It's gonna happen someday. The screening itself, between the R1 or the, the PUD, the commercial and the...
Commercial and the... Between the C3 base and the R1, what do we have?
There's site proof screen required.
What's the applicant willing to give us on that screening?
Tax dollars, fees.
Did he say composite fencing? I think he might have. Or mason area, which, which one of those was...
I'm not trying to be a pain, but I do have a quick question. I don't understand the TE about the tract one, if it's developed in C3. They're asking for all those uses. We worked out the buffer change. But if it says it's developed in accordance with the C3, what if it's not? What's their other option? Does they still do all houses?
Residential.
It's, it's permitted to also be the same as the other tract.
No, that's what I was, I was thinking. Then the buffer go away, the fencing, screening would go away, all that, okay?
Yeah, there's nothing to do.
Wanted to make sure.
Buffer.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
We're clarifying TE3. So the question still is, on the screening, what, what does the applicant have to offer? Between the commercial and the residential?
Okay.
We'll do site proof screening with, with brick columns on 75-foot centers. That's, that's about one per lot corner. I mean, that's one per every two lots, basically.
I think the, I think the material is also in question, so that, that, that might be what is more important.
I, so the whole, the whole fencing, I mean, I've seen some of these composite fences or plastic fences, and, I mean, they, I would, I would much rather do stockade that's trimmed and capped and stained than I, than I, than I would on a, a plastic fence, that...
I'm in agreement with Mr. Grubbs on that one. I was gonna kinda chime in on that of like, composite, it can be good if it's good material and it's like, proper, you know...
It can be really cheap, too.
Products, but it can also be really cheap plastic that looks bad and is even worse for the environment.
Can't handle our climate.
I was gonna say, my, my dad has a building right across the street, and when I drove in today, there was a fence crew removing all the composite and going back with cedar stockade, because they were, they warp and they get weird.
My dad's had a fishing dock made out of it for 17 years, and it's just fine. If it was made of wood...
Well, that's what they fit, what they use for fence.
Well, that's, yeah, that's the, that's, you know, what they use for a walking surface.
It's fence pan, it's Trex fence panels.
No, those are good, but by saying composite, it doesn't equal Trex necessarily. That, that's my concern, really, but...
No, it could, it could be vinyl, those ugly vinyl white fences, you know?
All right.
I would, I mean, I, I'd be okay with the, with an 8-foot tall fence between the commercial and the residential. Two more feet, but it's between higher, you know, higher intensity use.
All right, we're fine.
On a corner. On a corner. 75-foot columns.
75-foot centers, 8-foot tall.
Now, are we saying cedar capped?
Capped cedar fence.
Capped.
Okay. And why not, why, we're here, just go ahead and go 6-foot tall, but match the capped cedar.
On what?
On the R, or the residential.
On County Line?
Along County Line.
Along County Line, brick columns, 6-foot, capped.
And...
And?
Where the posts are, I just think the posts need to be on the property line, on the property lines. I know that, so 40-foot.
He wants it on the property line, is what he's saying.
Yeah, so he, he wants to go every third property.
Yeah.
At 120.
120.
So 80. Maximum of 80.
Maximum of 80.
Hit your other. Currently, give it, give it a little bit.
Okay, on 80.
Jeremy, good?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. Just because I'm still learning, I have a quick question I should ask you this. I kinda brought it up in our meeting. So this strip right here, it doesn't show up.
Those, those lots have to be bigger.
Right, but why, just out of curiosity, why wasn't this part of the PUD now? Or is it being reserved to put it later? Or has it already been?
It's currently straight zoned R1. So it remains straight zoned R1.
Yeah, we've been in communication with those folks to the east during this whole process, and that was kinda part of the understanding of what...
Because they're bigger lots, you left it straight zoning, so this, with today going into council and approvals and stuff, this whole entire thing will develop, there won't be a strip there like it shows on...
No, it'll be one development.
Okay.
Only the people in this room right now will ever know.
Right.
That they're different zonings.
Okay. Just making sure that was the case.
Okay.
And we're, we're good with the 1320?
Yeah.
And then the usable, you want...
Striking for?
Well, I think we should modify.
So we agreed to TE1 and 2, TE3...
Right now, that, it's that property, the tree property on the north, right, is where the common area is?
Well, there's, there's one in the dead center as well.
And there's a park in the dead center? Oh, yeah, I see. Do we care what that percentage is? That's all I'm asking.
Bet it's 3%.
I mean, it's gonna be more than 3%, we know that.
I like the idea of establishing it.
Well, will it, because...
Well, between the common on the, at the north end and then that lot in the middle, it'll be more than 3% of that total property.
I guess I'd ask why we need, I mean, staff put this in error.
No, but if we're gonna negotiate it on individual PUDs from now on or whatever...
Well, I think that's a terrible idea. I mean, this is an eight agenda item, docket. This is my point, there needs to be a discussion about creating a standard so that we don't spend...
Well, I think that you will then, as a developer and completing the application, put that in and we won't even have to discuss it, we'll know.
I like that.
Yeah, our intent was just to, to get a number so that when, when it's platted, there's something to review it against. And, you know, we, so we have apparently the quarter mile, I think. You know, it would be good to get a number so that, you know, that space that we're seeing there, we could review it and make sure, you know, it doesn't get reduced to, you know...
Listen, again, the subregs have a number.
30 feet wide or something like that.
And it's three.
2, 10%. And all these designs are...
Cannot do 10%.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I think it, I think 5 captures it, I just would hate to...
Why don't we say 4 and 1/2? Okay, Mark says 5.
So...
Again, the advice of council, he's willing to... Again, the advice of council, he's willing to say five.
Let's make a deal.
This is, Thursdays are gonna be a hoot.
I'm gonna make you guys do a better job on your application.
If we're gonna keep doing this...
We're making rules up with their staff reports.
We should change the subrags if we're gonna, I mean, increase it every time, we should increase it.
Well, I mean, we have subrags and we have 6,000 square foot R1 lots. Do we see those ever?
Right, no. And the other argument is, is no matter what we're looking at right there, it's always conceptual. So we're locating parks, we're locating distances, and we're locating common area in a PUD in writing, not a pretty picture.
The plat's gonna show where they're at.
Do we need to add those TEs for the screening?
So here's what I think on TEs. One and two, we agree, I would say we strike TE3. We'll add a TE6 that says there shall be a 10-foot landscape buffer. TE4 revised to be 5%. TE5, the 1,320.
Consistent with what I have.
And then the screening, do we need to have a TE for the screening?
Yes, so along county line, it's the six-foot capped stockade with brick columns on 80-foot centers. Where adjacent to, on tract one, we're adjacent to the residential. It is eight-foot stockade with... What was the capped and what was the distance between on centers on the commercial?
75.
75.
Just to clarify, we're at 5% of the overall property that's developed as 40-foot lots? Or the, I mean, we gotta throw out the commercial then at that point.
Overall property, right?
Overall residential property.
Overall residential.
Residential. It's 5% if you end up developing the commercial as residential, it's 5% of the whole. Otherwise, the commercial's excluded from the calculation.
5% of the residentially developed property.
Trek two, right, we could say it then.
Yeah.
That'd be a note on the plat probably, right, anyway, yeah. Think so. Anything else? Did you want me to modify that number four TE? Stating that between the developable R1 base.
Yeah, so there should be a minimum of 5% usable open space within this PUD where developed as residential.
I'm gonna do my best here. Ready for a motion? I will make a motion to recommend approval of PUD 2104 with TE number one. TE number two, striking TE number three. TE number four being modified to a minimum of 5% usable open space within the PUD of the developed R residential. PUD number five, all lots to be located within 1,320 foot of usable open space. TE6, 10-foot landscape buffer between tract one or within tract one. TE7, a six-foot tall capped cedar capped fence with 80-foot masonry columns, a long county line in the R1 base, and an eight-foot tall cedar capped fence with 75-foot, with columns on 75-foot centers between the C3 and R1.
On TE7, just to make sure that it's clear for the clerk, you said 80-foot columns, you meant 80-foot on center.
Spacing, yes.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Noble to recommend approval of the item to city council, subject to the technical evaluations as read. That has been seconded by Commissioner Harrison, please cast your votes. And that item is recommended for approval. Item 13.
Item 13 is PUD 2087, application rezone 9,700 Southwest 44th Street from...
Hello, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a PUD that was continued several times. There was a community meeting that was held, I didn't have the pleasure of going there, but I know that Mr. Meek was there, as well as Caitlin from my office. My understanding was one of the biggest points of contention at the time, multifamily. We have since removed multifamily as a use unit. So what we're left with is proposed tract A will be limited O1 office and then proposed tract B will be a commercial development. We're adjacent to, obviously, the turnpike there, interchange there. So we think it's ripe for commercial development. And I don't believe there are any remaining protests. I know your packet reflected that, but again, I think they've predated our community meeting.
Mr. Meek, this is your ward, I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
And I will note, there are no technical evaluations.
Right.
I was really looking forward to getting into them.
Not yet. It's a big deal that no one's here because this blew up and there was a lot of protests, as you guys can see. And I appreciate the applicant removing the R4 multifamily out of it, that was the biggest issue. I noticed that the exhibit has been updated to storage units. I just want to go over, because I'm having trouble finding it. I've got the landscaping regulations, of course, we gotta talk about fence. If we have a, like, storage unit use on this tract B, C3, 20-foot landscape buffer shall be provided along the PUD boundary where adjacent to residential zoning or use. Trees shall be planted within landscape buffer spacing of 20 feet. But we don't address any fencing there, do we?
So fencing is not within the landscape, fencing would be regulated under the screening regulations.
Okay, but on my 8.2, it says landscape and screening.
Oh, yeah, so, I mean, we'll have to meet the city's ordinance as it relates to screening.
Okay. So that's my question, so C3 versus R residential uses, it would be just the standard boilerplate, stockade, chain?
Site proof.
Site proof.
I don't think you could do chain link, you'd have to do site proof fencing.
Okay. Any commissioners have any comments regarding any of these issues? Like I said, there's, a lot of stuff's been worked out. I did have a call yesterday and a request to limit the hours of operation on the storage units if it ended up going as a storage unit facility. I told him we've been through that multiple times, especially on RVs that you can't, because that's when everyone comes home on Sunday nights, you know. This being a mini storage, I, you know, I've had storage units before that automatic gates and I could go there anytime I want. And I'd be mad, kind of upset if I couldn't have, because sometimes you're moving in the middle of the night.
That's the issue with ours, is that people have an expectation. Now, the great thing about personal storage, if it develops like that, is people put their stuff in there and never come again.
Right.
But there is an expectation that you have the ability to access it. They're all, I guess we could commit that they would be gated if it develops as personal storage, they're to be gated.
I would like to, that's part of it.
I don't think you could have a personal storage facility without it being gated.
I've...
At least they need new ones.
Yeah, I don't know about new ones, but I've ran on ones that are, in my previous job, I went to ones that weren't. And that was where the trouble, you know, criminal elements happened a lot there. So gated would help to make that a TE.
Yeah, if personal storage is a use that is developed, it shall be gated.
Yes, please. Anybody else see anything? All right. I'm ready to make a motion unless anyone has any other comments. Ready to recommend approval of PUD 2087 with one TE added that if the tract B develops as personal storage, it shall be a gated facility.
A motion from Commissioner Meek to recommend the item to city council, subject to the technical evaluation. That's been seconded by Commissioner Privet, please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And that item is recommended for approval. I believe that is the last item on the agenda. So it'll take us to additional items, communications and reports, planning commission committees, any? Planning commission members, Mr. Meek?
Since it's so early in the day, I thought we'd talk about stuff. No, kidding. I did have a question, do we have anything? I know when it got to you, you might bring it up, we have a study session we're trying to schedule in.
Yeah, so yes, study session, David Box, you might wanna listen on this one. So we're gonna have a study session on October 30th is what we're shooting for, for data centers.
Okay.
So we're still trying to work out details on that, but it's looking like October 30th at 10:00 a.m. So we're trying to get on the 23rd at a request from Councilwoman Avers, but we can't quite make that work. So we're hoping that October 30th would work. And our intent is to have planning staff give a kind of a brief overview, but also have other guests like OG&E and utilities department, possibly others, just so we can get a comprehensive view. Because it's not just this, you know, we've got a case coming up, of course, but there are other data center, other things cooking in the region. So we just wanted to have a kind of a pop-up study session, I guess.
Right, right. And we do have things on the agenda, it is already listed as a PUD coming at us fast in November 13th, matter of fact, I think, when it's on our agenda for. So I would appreciate any and all commissioners that can come to that that day. It's gonna affect us all, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Privet?
No, but maybe for the 20 people listening, remember to vote on Tuesday.
October 14th.
Be good for us, yeah.
Commissioner Newman?
Nothing.
Commissioner Govine? Commissioner Harrison? Commissioner Noble?
Just a couple of things. First, on the data center, I have a friend who's an electrical engineer and builds data centers. And he said he would talk to us, three, four of us, if we wanted to hear it. So if you want to, just contact me and we'll set something up. He actually runs some data centers in Oklahoma City. The other thing I would just like to say is that maybe, and I don't know how to do this or not, but the applications themselves, as the economy's changed, are getting more and more away from our standard zoning. And I don't know how we can bring that back, other than fight harder from up here. I talked to Dan a little bit about, you know, your densities and how far away, you know, what is rule? I mean, we have the urban low. How much density do we allow in the urban low?
Yeah, I mean, when we think about duplexes, I mean, those are, I mean, that's, those are to increase density. And you see that kind of in the urban core and just on the outsides of the urban core. So is there some, you know, line, zone, overlay, whatever, that, you know, establishes them, you know, where you can and can't have them out in a more rural setting? You know, if we want to look at that, you know, does it make sense?
Right.
And I don't know what the new code contemplates.
And I'm always up for a variety of housing and types. And it's just the percentage of them against an individual subdivision just seemed today, they were, it was a high number.
You know, when they're done in conjunction with a single-family product, is there a percentage, you know, a reasonable percentage of overall units that they top out at? I'm not against duplexes, you know, I think they're an absolute, I mean, they're one of the tools in the toolbox of residential development, I think we need them. But it's just making sure that they're in the appropriate place and the appropriate quantity. Was that everything from you?
Yes.
Okay, the only other thing that I had was, I mean, if we're starting to look at open space differently, do we want to make sure that we have some must-haves information required in an application or on exhibits so that we are consistent as we review applications? So, you know, going forward, we're gonna ask applicants for them to state their open space and their PUD proposed open space and identify it on an exhibit, you know, in the application. So that might be a tweak that we need to consider for applications going forward.
One other thing I'd like to add to that is in our ordinance, it says the requirements for a PUD or a SPUD is that the application shall include the design statement and a master development plan map. I would like to have that defined. Because some of them, when we get them, we've even tied multifamily layout, building layouts to it. Sometimes we get it and we don't hear the applicant say this is conceptual. This is what they're really going for. And then sometimes we don't get anything. We get David Box's red squiggly stuff. Yeah, the topo maps with the red all over it.
Yeah, that are supposed to be contour maps.
Full and useless.
Yeah, so my request is that I believe in a PUD/SPUD negotiation that a master, or is the exact words, a master development plan map and related exhibits, it continues to say, that shall be adopted as part of the rezoning ordinance. And it goes further down and talks about the master development plan map. This is in our ordinance, and I think we don't ask for enough of the layout sometimes. You know, there's, oh, we're gonna do that in the plat. No. We're negotiating a PUD. You can't just, in my opinion, you can't assume that no matter what they show us, it's conceptual and it means nothing. That's all I got.
Planning Department?
Yeah, going along with that, I mean, so, and related to the code update, I'll try and tie this together. So this, you know, we were trying to, everything that went on today, everything that goes on in other planning commission meetings, incorporate that into the code update, subregs. So the schedule would be the subdivision regulations, we have a draft right now, we're working on that with folks, including anybody who's interested here, to include open space, et cetera. So that's part of the package that's coming forward and we hope to get all adopted next year. Other thing, we will not be able to get to the base zones for the suburban area, for urban low. We will be doing landscape code, parking code, which we have drafts of, the use code. Those will be applicable citywide, but the base zones that we'll hope to bring forward next year will be just the urban medium. We actually would like to have some zoning changes for the rural areas, but there's just a lot of work to be done with the suburban areas. So while we can't, like, that's gotta be in phase two. We will be able to address the subdivision regulations, including open space, et cetera. So we can have that discussion, and that's actually getting close. We'll have discussions about the open space, about the rights of way within a subdivision, if we need to make tweaks to those. So just wanted to update you on that. And then happened, I pulled this up as we were discussing the, we talked about the, Commissioner Meek mentioned the code. I mean, just as a reminder to all of us and to the community, to developers, I mean, the PUDs and SPUDs, you know, the way staff looks at it, it says right here, "One of the intents is to provide development that contributes more to the general prosperity, health, safety, and welfare than what otherwise..." and welfare than would otherwise be provided through the standard development process." So we're looking for more when a pud or a spud comes through, which is why, you know, the code in the subrags and the impact fee, or park requirements, et cetera, are good reference points, but we're looking for more. So, and just finally, going along with that, when we, but at the same time, we're looking at what you all typically approve, knowing that we typically do puds and spuds, and so we're trying to incorporate that into the zoning code. So that's going to be a bit of a balancing act, because we have moved the goalposts to use it in a good way. It's usually used negatively, but I'm going to use it in a good way. The goalposts have been moved in a good way. What the planning commission, the city council, and the community expect is different than what the code requires. I think that's pretty much known. So we're going to be incorporating that into the new code, but we don't, you know, we don't want to go too far. So we're just, that's going to be coming to you all, and we'll need to get a lot of input on that. So anyway, I already mentioned the study session, October 30th. I think that's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
Excellent. Will you guys be sending a meeting invite for that study session? In due course?
Yes, we will do that.
Great.
Okay. Municipal Counselor's Office, nothing. Any citizens to be heard? Doesn't look like it. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.